Welcome to the Georgetown Scott County Planning Commission Meeting, December 12, 2019. Commission Business, A, Approval of November Invoices.
I make my question.
Motion by Mrs. Mizell.
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? For the record, so far, Mr. Wiseman is not here, Mr. Moran is not here, Mr. Caldwell is not here.
Three, that's it.
Okay. B, Approval of the November 14, 2019 minutes.
So, move.
Motion by Mr. Mifflin.
Second.
Second by Mr. Stone, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay. C, Approval of December Agenda, are there any changes, Joe, to the agenda?
No changes.
Okay, so no changes, I need a motion to approve the December Agenda.
Vote for approval of the December Agenda.
A motion by Mr. Smith.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Vest, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, D, Items for Postponement and/or Withdrawal. We've got three, and I'll read them. A, PDP 2019-45 Bluegrass Campground is postponed, so if you're here for that, it's going to be postponed. FSP 2019-46, the Rita Jones Property, that one is postponed, as well as ZMA 2019-50 Georgetown Scott County, PRTF, and that is also postponed tonight. Okay, so...
Do I make a motion?
Motion by Mrs. Mizell.
Second.
Second by Mr. Stone, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Consent Agenda, we do have one that's consent eligible, which is the PDP 2019-49 Parkview Medical Plaza Development Plan for three commercial buildings with the associated parking lot at 1171, 1175, and 1189 Lexington Road. Is there anybody here opposed to this application, or just want to hear it? Okay, so we do have a consent eligibility, and need a motion.
I make my question.
So we have a motion by Mrs. Mizell.
Second.
And second by Mr. Mifflin, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that one gets approved by consent. Next, we'll go right to the, I guess the only thing that would be left on here. So, any think we need to go into public hearing?
Yes, sir.
So openness is a public hearing. ZMA-2019-47, which is 185 Industry Road Zone Change Request for A1 to I1 and C1 located at 185 Industry Road.
So, this zone change is a, for a property located at 185 Industry Road, it's at the northernmost end of Industry Road.
Merry Christmas.
The applicant's property is currently zoned A1, and they're seeking a combination of I1 zoning with a C1 zoning along the stream that is, that exists on the northern side of the property. The current zoning of the surrounding properties is either A1 or I1 for all the properties around it. The lot is a total of 17.3 acres, and they're requesting about 15.7 acres to be rezoned to I1, and about 1.6 acres to be rezoned to C1. Access to the site is from Industry Road.
For the record, Matt, you're the only thing holding us back from the shortest meeting ever.
I'm gonna keep it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, your words are appreciated.
You're welcome, Mr. Perkins.
I will keep it quick, but we also want to make sure that the record contains the relevant information for KRS. As you can see, this is, this is the property site, project site here in the blue. There is a slight error, or a thing that needs to be changed on our zoning maps, I've already spoken to Whitley. This, this part of this property that adjoins it should be zoned I1 as well, and it is also located inside the city limits. This aerial view of the project site, as you can see, this, so this is that neighboring property. The, the project site has the, the access road that comes north here to the, to the, I guess the main part of the site. There's a small stream that runs through this wooded area that you can see up here, and this access easement does provide access to these two adjoining lots. When we look at the findings that are necessary for a zone change under Kentucky state law, the first thing we look at is, does the plan comply, or is it in agreement with the, with the most recently adopted comprehensive plan? This is the future land use map from our most recently adopted comprehensive plan. So as you can see, the light gray color here indicates property that is proposed for industrial use, which is what the applicant is proposing. Everything inside this purple boundary, so inside in this case being to the south or the bottom of the screen, is inside the urban service boundary, so the property, project site is inside the urban service boundary. It is proposed for light industrial, so we that, we do find that it meets with the requirements of the future land use map. I've sort of outlined in blue here on the applicant's concept plan, the areas that they're proposing to rezone to C1 to protect that stream. As I outline in the staff report, that's also in agreement with our comprehensive plan, that they're protecting that, that natural feature. In addition to that, I outline here on the screen, as well as in the staff report, other areas where the application is in agreement with the comprehensive plan. So overall, I find that the, their proposed zone change is in agreement with the comprehensive plan as required by state statute. I also found that their concept plan largely was in agreement with, with most of our ordinances, and if there are any other, any minor areas where it's, where there's a discrepancy, that's an issue that can be resolved when they move ahead with a preliminary development plan in the future. So overall, I do recommend approval of their zoning map amendment, with the finding that, you know, it is in agreement with the current comprehensive plan, and with the four conditions that are listed there on the screen. I think, from, from the sound of it, from our discussion at workshop, it sounded like the only one that the applicant maybe had a question about was item number four on the conditions that they agreed to annex into the city of Georgetown. I did double check with the Municipal Water and Sewer Service this afternoon, and there is not a requirement that the, the property be hooked onto sewer immediately, or there's not really even a timeframe, it sounds like, where they would have to hook onto the sewer. The, the language that I was told was that, you know, if they have a building that has water sewer services, and there's a sewer line within 100 feet, they would have to attach at that point, but that's not the case right now. And as far as I know, the applicant's plan is still for, you know, a building that might have a restroom to be more of a, a long-term plan for, for the project site. So, and that's all that I had.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Matt? The applicant like to speak.
Good evening, and I won't hold us up any, any, any longer than I have to, to avoid not meeting any speed records. Chris Tharris with Billings Law Firm, on behalf of the applicant. We agree with, with staff's recommendation of the rezoning, as was discussed at the Planning Commissioner Workshop. My understanding is the closest sewer line is maybe 3,000 or so feet away, and we, we would request that the annexation would be at the time that sewers run out to the, near the property, rather than at the time of, of rezoning. Otherwise, we're, we're in agreement with the recommendation of staff.
Questions? Matt, thoughts or comments, if you want to step up there, of annexing? Because I think on Monday, we did talk, and I think initially the application said they were okay, applicant said they were okay with it. Now they don't want to, would that cause any issues?
I mean, the comprehensive plan, to me, and I think I quoted in the, or mentioned it in the staff report, talks about how urban uses in that northern Georgetown area should be annexed, and, and that's something that we've typically done. Or if the property doesn't currently adjoin a property that's inside the city, we've asked for that property to basically agree to annex at the time that it, that it is adjoining. In this case, the property already adjoins a property that's within the city, and so we would just expect that that to be done simultaneously. Otherwise, they might be asking, the, I guess they would go to the county for approval of the zone change, and then sort of have this possible annexation that might occur later, and I just, I don't know that that's necessarily the best way for, for that to happen.
So, we've got this urban service area line across here?
That's, that's not in the correct, that's, I think, our old urban service boundary.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I think I do, so the, the current urban service boundary is, so the, the old urban service boundary basically ran from here. It was adjusted in 2016 with our most recent update, so that it would follow parcel boundaries, rather than just sort of being in, almost an arbitrary line that kind of cut through the middle of existing properties.
So, what would be the advantage or disadvantage of them having to annex right now? I mean, the sewer line's not close enough, other than paying city taxes.
So, I mean, typically, with, with a use like an industrial zoning, we look for, for urban style uses to be located in our urban areas, inside of our cities.
Right.
And so, anytime somebody comes, comes with a request for, you know, an urban residential, a commercial zoning, or an industrial use, we ask that those properties be annexed into the city, so that there can be, you know, they can contribute, I guess financially, to the provision of, of services. I mean, there's services that would be provided to the site, and I guess maybe currently are being provided to the site outside of sewer service. I mean, I'd imagine the, you know, the first responders to a site like this would be largely city, city emergency services, things like that.
Matt, another question I would have.
Yeah.
At the time that that, that right-of-way, if that road is built to county or city standards, I guess, would, would that be turned over? Would that become a city street?
I mean, if, if they wanted to construct it to city standards, I mean, I suppose it might be eligible for dedication.
But at this point, it would just be...
The industry road right now is a county road, so I don't, I don't know how that would, how that would work.
I guess that, that's what we need to be looking at, is making the transition, I guess, from county to city at some point. If, if more properties in that area were annexed into the city, then...
Yeah.
I mean, if that's our urban service boundary.
Matt, could you go back, or whoever's, Michaela maybe, or Joe, go back a couple shots? What about the surrounding properties, are any of those annexed into the city currently?
So, basically, this, the Mary Onheiser property, I can go to the aerial image, it'll be easier to see. So the Onheiser property, this one is currently inside the, the city limits. This property to the, to the east of that is also inside the, the city limit. So, basically, it has two properties adjoining it that are already inside the city, neither of which have, have sewer at this time.
So are all the factories up and down Industry Road in, in the city?
Not, not all of them.
Now, that was developed long before the city got out there.
Right.
This, this one isn't zoomed out far enough to see, but, like, you can see, these, these properties here on the west side of Industry Road aren't, aren't inside the city. Some of them were rezoned, like I mentioned before, with, with a condition that should annexation be possible, that they agreed to annex. The, the issue is all, with some of them, has been that there was never a property adjoining to them that was inside the city, so they couldn't annex. Since the city can't, like, it all has to be contiguous.
Touch them.
If I might, Mr. Chairman, and I've also got a question as to whether we can have that kind of condition down beyond the zone change. You know, once you've got the zone change, in fact, the statute pretty much only mentions what is it, development plans or something, that you can require subsequent to a zone change. You really don't have a whole lot of requirements. We do on occasion, don't get me wrong, but to require annexation down the road after it's already zoned, not that I'm expecting them to appeal this or anything, I don't expect that at all, but I, I think that would be problematic for us.
So it'd be better to do it today versus...
Well, and, and I apologize to them, but I think it would be better to do that. Plus, and this is just going back a while, there were other lots out there, because historically, it's been very difficult to annex industrial property. And the city had always taken the position that we will if they agree. Well, there was one or two that actually had sewage up to their ankles, and they still didn't want to be. Now, we didn't have the sewer pipe at that point, but they didn't care. You know, they stepped up out of the sewage, and that was okay with them, they didn't want to be in the city. So, that's just a complicated future if we don't get the annexation now, especially since they are indeed contiguous to existing city property.
Question I guess I have for the applicant, I know on Monday, y'all were okay with annex, what's changed between Monday and today?
Well, I, I think we're okay with annexation, we prefer that it occur in the future. And it sounds like at some point, maybe the, the path, because you can't annex individual parcels one at a time, it would be an annexation of that whole area. I know there's a lot of the development further south on Industry Road is developed, it's just not annexed. You know, so our, our preference would be to wait until that entire area is annexed, and that may, may also be beneficial in putting city services out there that are going to serve the entire, that entire kind of block of, of industrial units. So certainly, that's our preference.
And I think what we're trying to avoid is spot zoning or annexing, where, you know, you're just kind of doing a couple here, and then, I think, Mr. Perkins comments.
We need some consistency.
It's always good.
If you have two that are already, already annexed that are...
Adjoining.
Adjoining, then it makes sense to continue it on, and maybe we can, at some point, maybe we can...
Coax the others. But also, as Matt pointed out, we'd be sending this to the county for its own change, and they don't generally do zone changes for urban-type uses. So, it just, this is just kind of able to join in a number of ways, if we don't go ahead and require that.
I think the larger the industrial that park area gets, the, the more reason there is to extend that sewer line as well. I mean, if it's a 3,000-foot extension sewer line, it'd be served...
Wasn't, excuse me, wasn't this planned to be served by sewer once they got the force main from Sims Road and all that back to town? Or did they change their mind on that once they got Mallard Points planned? Because that used to be the plan. Okay.
You wanted to bring it up.
Plans changed, that's okay.
All right, any other questions for the applicant?
The road, we, we talked about it, do you plan on putting it up to county standards, or just not asking the county, or not dedicating it to the county?
I think that is to be determined. I don't think it's a condition to build it to those, to those standards, and at that time, that decision would be made. Currently, there's, there's an access easement that runs...
Right.
On that narrow, narrow area, and so, from the applicant's perspective, that decision hasn't been made.
So you all just maintain that for the time being, and then if you ever want it to county standard, you, you'll have to get it up to speed there.
Yeah.
And it looks like on the blueprints, and y'all agreed Monday, is you guys were going to asphalt that.
Yeah, I think the timing of, the timing of that's, you know, up in the air right now, it's going to be used primarily for, for storage. There may be some, some development in the, in the longer term, but, yeah, at some point, when the, the two other parcels sell and are developed, it may be that, that timing.
I think what, I just want to make sure we're clear, what was said Monday, Mr. Bradley, the current owner of the property, and whomever was here from the per, the company that's purchasing this piece of property. You weren't there Monday though, were you?
I was not there Monday.
Yeah.
I was out of town.
Yeah.
My name's Jeff Metzey, so I'm one of the partners in the business.
Can you go there?
Yeah, please.
Absolutely, so it's on record. So Colin Stout is my business partner, and he was here on Monday, and I think he stated it very similar to the way that Chris did, that our preference would be just to wait on the annexation, but we're perfectly fine if that's the right...
Actually, he said he was okay annexing it on Monday.
Yeah, okay, so...
That's why I was wondering what was, what had changed.
Yeah, that, that's fine, I think we had discussed it, and I thought that's the way he communicated it, but I think we're okay with annexation. We don't have like a big objection to that.
The other point that I wanted to bring, it just because it's on the blueprints, and I think it's in here, is... the paving of the road going back, which is about 600 feet, what he had said on Monday is, you're all are going to have that paved. It's going to be a shared expense with your businesses and Mr. Bradley, because he still has those two parcels. And then, once Mr. Bradley sells those parcels, he'll get his share of the cost of that paved.
That's correct, that was the plan of record, was that we would have, you know, we would do the paving at the point that we go through the development process.
Right.
And then, when those lots sell, the future owners, since they have access to the road, and the current plot indicates a shared expense and maintenance on those roads, that that would be contingent, we just need to put something in plan on record.
I was going to say, that would be on the plots.
Yes.
Right, Charlie?
Yes.
So it's on there currently today on maintenance, we just want to make sure that the initial creation of the road, that that's included in that cost.
We want to make sure we had your best interest covered as well.
No, I appreciate that.
All right, any other questions? Entertain a, well, we've got to probably discuss the annexation, whether we're going to do it or not going to do it, and if we are, I need a motion to reflect that.
And to close the public hearing.
Oh, yes, let's, unless there's anybody else here in favor or against, we'll close the public hearing, and then entertain a motion.
Didn't, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, take a look. Sorry, Steve, you shouldn't have been kicking me all along.
So no objections, I would make the motion that we accept the zone change for ZMA 2019-47 with the four conditions that accompany the zone change.
So motion by Mr. Smith.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mifflin. Let's do a roll call, saying that it's a public hearing and a zone change, so, Ms. Mizell, Mrs. Mizell?
Yes.
Mr. Smith? Yes. Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Vest?
Yes.
Mr. Mifflin?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so it's approved, thank you. And I think we have nothing else, well, do you need to go over, Joe, real quick, the approval of the deadlines or previous?
Yeah, we need to approve the meeting schedule for next year. It hasn't changed from our regular, our current schedule, so workshop on Monday at 4:30, meeting second Thursday of the month at 6:00, so just, you want to look through the dates?
Which are in your package, so take a glance. All right, so we'll make a motion and adjourn.
All right, well, do you want, first make a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, let's do, I mean, I'm ready. I do need a motion then to accept the dates, deadlines, meetings, workshops, et cetera.
I make motion.
Motion by Mrs. Mizell?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stone, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Adjourned. Merry Christmas to everyone.